Standing for the indication.
President, to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for all that are here and for all of our citizens. We ask that you give a special prayer. We give a special prayer for those up in the northern area who have lost so much and be with all those people and just help them get through this tragic storm. We ask that you be with all of our citizens. All these things we pray here, Father.
Welcome our guest to business tonight, especially we have a couple of young boys that I told them to do here, so try to learn something. It's probably the wrong place for that, maybe, but we should all be on our best behavior, so maybe. Unfortunately, they may see what it was all about here, but we're certainly glad to have you guys here. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If those are favor seen to five saying aye, I oppose no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, if we have anyone know ten minutes, no ten minute public input period. Okay, we'll move right along into our items to be considered for our consent agenda. Approval of the October the eighteenth minutes, acknowledgement of September financials. You have those in your agenda package, so if you have any questions or anything about either of those now would be the time to go ahead and do that. Okay. Under our own business, discussion of holiday lights, budget amendment. Mr. Ingram?
Did we not do?
Well, we don't really approve that, do we, until the?
The minutes, not good.
The minutes, we don't approve the minutes. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
One second.
Second.
There's some doubt there. Okay. Any other discussion of questions about any changes anything? If not, those are favor seen to five saying aye. I oppose no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Yeah, we can move on to the rest of this. Discussion of holiday lights, budget amendment, which is attachment three. This is an adjustment of $30,000 from contingency, I believe. That's one.
Lost contingencies.
Lost contingencies for some new holiday lighting. Does anybody have any questions? We, I believe, Mr. Wood, discussed this at your last meeting. I think you can certainly answer me if you do. No questions?
So then, if the next meeting, we approve that.
Sign off on this as a budget amendment.
Right.
Okay, now, has the, this has been ordered, I understand. These lights have been ordered?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is, do you know what the general description would be?
Christmas lights.
Holiday lights.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I assume it's these days, is that these on the, replacing those on the power phones?
Yes.
Okay.
Know what he passed around pictures?
Yeah, if he would please, I think he'd be there.
Just happened to bring it.
Can't change it now. Yeah, okay.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes?
While that's been passed out, I just want to recognize the fact that we have one of our former council members here.
I just noted, I just noted that.
And who has, for many years, requested that we have new Christmas lights.
Right.
And I think it's great that she was here to hear that that's going through.
Standard welcome tonight. We will be, we will be at the next meeting, I assume, approving those replacement Christmas lights, or holiday lights, I'm sorry. Let's go ahead.
I'm doing holiday lights.
All right, there's not any other questions on those. The discussion of the cantata projection equipment, budget amendment of 51,000. This is from the reserves, hotel, hotel tax reserves. We had talked about that and basically, you know, we concurred with doing that last meeting. This is just approval of budget amendment that we should occur at our next meeting. Anybody have any comments or about that or questions? Okay. Discussion of travel and special events expenditure policy adjustments. I believe this was something that council member Huffman had brought up and we were at the last meeting and we discussed it a little bit and we were going to discuss it again at this meeting if there are questions or anything and then move on for any vote at our next meeting. Does anyone have any?
I'd just like to reiterate that on the local business meal expenditure, I don't have any problem with changing the amounts. The amounts that we originally used were based on what was in existence at the time and I don't know how far back they go, so these look reasonable what we're changing anyway. The problem I have is with the second part of it is that allowing local meals with being reimbursed with just local officials or department heads without the presence of a third party. I restate, I do not believe that the taxpayers should be responsible for that type of expense.
Absolutely.
Therefore, I'm requesting that when we do vote on this, I'd like to split it into two votes. Vote on the first, paragraph four and paragraph five separately, so that each of us can vote accordingly. Thank you.
Ms. Rush?
I agree with him on it, but my concern here is I'm looking at, under local business meal expenditure and it says, "Local business meal expenditures between two or more council members, the city manager and the mayor without the presence of a third party involved in a business purpose of current interest to the city is not a reimbursable expense." So it sounds like it's already been removed from there.
That was discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Before we said.
Well, is this the replacement? I'm reading that as the.
That's the current.
Current.
And the proposal is to remove that sentence, I believe.
Yeah, oh, okay. That's the current. Oh, all right. I thought this was the replacement.
So we don't, we don't actually have the replacement yet?
You got a handwritten one with strike three that y'all are looking at and nobody's has to be doing things.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor?
Right.
On this page right here, if you listen to.
Right. Tells you what we need to do.
That too, or whatever.
Okay. I tend to agree with Mr. Cummings on that one part of that policy there that I think that, I just don't see a reason why we couldn't make it. It's between council members or council and city manager or two department heads or whatever that we couldn't meet at city hall during eleven o'clock or one o'clock and not interfere with the lunch hour. So, that's just my opinion.
I think, sorry, jump in, but I think I agree with you a hundred percent. I don't think, and I even mentioned to my wife and she said, "It's nuts. We shouldn't, we shouldn't have to pay for you having lunch without another." So I think we should maybe just make a move, motion now, not necessarily a motion, but request that that last part of the local business meal expenditure to strike without the presence be removed, change and let it stand as it currently is.
I don't think just striking that, well, you don't have to do anything if you don't want to change it, but I think the proposed change doesn't change anything. You'd have to strike the whole sentence if you want to change. Taking out the "without the presence" means it would read "local business meal expenditure between two or more council members, city manager and the mayor."
Oh, yeah.
It's not, it's not a reimbursable expense. I'd say the same thing.
Okay.
So if you wanted to change it, you'd have to take the whole sentence out.
The only problem with that, that I saw, was if you do have a situation where there is a third party and there were local officials that wouldn't be reimbursed, could be interpreted also not to be reimbursable.
Got you.
And therefore, I go along with Mr. Rush, stating that just leave, just leave the sentence as it is.
Well, I mean, it depends on what you're trying to ban. If you're trying to ban meals between you without a third party, either way works.
Right.
Striking it or leaving it. Either way works.
But it also would, could ban a situation where there was a third party that would be a legitimate local expenditure, if you just take that without a third party out.
Right. So you want to leave it in. I think it's between what it is and taking it off.
Yeah, I think you want to leave the third party in there.
Yeah.
In case you have someone from the BOT Commission or somebody coming up. I don't know if they buy their mail or not, but it certainly would be an opportunity to, to get a little influence there and maybe get some road work or something, depending on what it is, but.
I think if the decision the council can make, just be clear, is we want to leave it the way it is or we want to change it. Then we can figure out how to do it.
I think leave it the way it is.
Right.
That's the simplest way. Okay. So will you put something together then again for the next meeting, which I assume will make the amendments to the dollar figure, the four dollars extra per meal or whatever it is, that that will still be in there?
Looks like they're really only, I'm trying to strike the fourth.
Per meal or whatever it is.
Sentence before is being restricted, so that such business should not include a third party. And I think you're, if you're not changing that, I think all of the proposed changes go away. Because the proposal was to take away the proceedings sentence as well, which says such business meal expenditure should always include a third party who has relevance to the business purpose being discussed. You want to take that out anyway? Because if two of, two of council members meeting is non-reimbursable, you don't want a rule that says you have to have a third party there for two council members to meet for lunch.
Of course, that's local. Yeah, I'd say that's awful now. A third party is going to be generally somewhere else.
Yeah, I just, it's taking this sentence out and putting it out, it just.
Why not just leave it the way it is?
That's what I, that's what I would like to see, just leave it the way it is or change it this way.
Okay. If you want, I can, since I wrote this policy and I have the original, I could make those changes and have them put into the packet for next time and say, "Mr. Dyer, I'm redoing all of this," or I send him the original. You can send him a copy for review, make sure we aren't on that. Which I'll do. That's acceptable.
Yeah.
Changes are needed to be made.
We just look at it for clarity, make sure it's saying what we want to say.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay. Discussion of charter code amendments regarding committees.
Yeah, the proposal here is to change the charter and the last time we changed the charter, we went through a very deliberative process. We had a citizens committee, I believe, fifteen members, spent about eighteen months making recommendations, and then you appointed a committee and we went through the process of, I guess, thoroughly discussing the changes. My objection to this is that we're reducing the change to a process that isn't as deliberative as I thought it, or I think it should be relative to the city charter, and we're looking at it on a piecemeal basis of saying, "Well, we don't particularly like this particular paragraph at this time and make any change." I think the whole process should be a lot more deliberative than just bringing it one at a time to the council.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a couple of things that he's talking about here in section 220. It says, "The last paragraph on the mayor pro tem" and says, "The mayor pro tem shall likewise perform the duties of the judge of the municipal court under the same conditions he would be required to act as mayor under this section." I think if anybody saw Mr. Berrisford coming into court as the judge, they kind of run.
That's an oldie.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, things like that, there's no problem taking out. And the part on the committee, I think the only thing that Mr. Huffman was looking at is, is affirming what has already been practiced and that you as mayor are ex officio member and all he wanted to do was add it to be specified that it's a non-voting ex officio member, which is the way we've always practiced it anyway. So some of those things, I don't think.
I think you may want to go a little further than that.
He wanted to take this ordinance and make it the charter. That's what he said at the last meeting.
But in essence, what it was doing was eliminating the mayor's authority to appoint council.
That's the only part that's.
That's, that's what was really there, I think.
Right. I mean, you have, the first sentence of the ordinance is in conflict with the charter.
Right.
The rest of it is not covered by the charter. So the ex officio thing, you could do by ordinance because it's not even addressed in the charter.
Okay.
So that could be done by ordinance.
That would be my preference.
Well, I think that, you know, it depends. I certainly would hate to see that a change where what I believe to be the only authority that the mayor has is not subject to council approval be eliminated. I think that the charter is a document that, to me, is much more than a policy. It's really sort of the framework or the foundation of exactly how this city should, should be operating within. And I agree with Mr. Cummings that the charter should only be amended after, you know, very careful and long consideration and deliberation. You know, like, for instance, the fifteen member citizens committee that was referred to spent almost two years working on that and made recommendations and the recommendations that they put into effect as amending the charter, along with the existing charter, was approved unanimously, I think, by the council with maybe one exception of an absence. But here we are six months later and looking to perhaps amend the charter again, and I think that may be a little, a little too, too soon. And really for maybe reasons that are not necessarily in the interest of the city. I don't think the cause, a council member or two may not like who the mayor appoints to a council committee. Now, keep in mind, a council committee, as all of you know, is not planning and zoning and it's not the DDA. It's not any of those meetings, those committees. It is simply a committee of the council that is assigned when an issue comes up for them to work on. I think that removing this and dealing with the charter on an infrequent basis, on a frequent basis like this, tends to cheapen or lessen the importance of the charter. You know, like I said, it's not, not just a policy. And I think it also adversely affects the ability of the mayor to set a course of action in dealing with certain issues. The mayor then picks the council members that he feels like maybe wants to, you know, that can have an interest in an area or want to do this, or, you know, or maybe even that he feels that will do a good job in that area. Certainly, no committee can make a final decision anyway on behalf. So if the mayor appoints a council committee and they work on an issue, they still have to come back to the council for any kind of action to be taken place. So why would you, why would you need to do that anyway? Finally, you know, I think, I think it is sort of contrary to good practice and may not really be in a good, strong legal position for the council to appoint themselves to a committee. There's no authorization in our present charter that I'm aware of that permits the council to appoint themselves to a committee. And by requiring approval of the council committee appointments by the mayor is, in essence, appointing themselves to a committee, which in my opinion is really, you shouldn't be appointing yourselves. We know one committee recently that the whole board was appointed, appointed themselves and see what kind of problems we got there. But to change this, I think, is, begins to work on the framework or the edge of probably changing the form of the government. And I think, I think by doing that, what we're doing is eliminating apparently the only complete mayoral authority that is presently granted by charter. This is not about Gene Hockwood. This is not about this council. This is not about the city manager. This is about the charter and the offices that each one holds. The office of mayor, the office of council, the office of city manager. That's what it's about and that's what the charter addresses, I think, is, is not individuals, but the framework of which we operate. Okay? Anyone else?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I believe at the last council meeting, that discussion came up and this was brought up, and I think clerk had started going through because there was discussion about, under the code, there was one thing under the charter or something else, there was conflict. She did start, I think she did stop, and we didn't want to have Mr. Dyer look at it. So is that process still taking place? Because there are still things in there that.
Well, it should be. I don't know. Are you, are you still looking at, looking at that?
Well, I kind of stopped when they talked about that because I didn't know what direction it was going to go or who was going to do it. I can keep working on it. I'm just referencing things that are.
I think some of it's probably easy fixes if it's under the code.
Well, I think, I think.
And it's that squared away, but for changing the charter right now, okay, I understand what you're saying.
It's a little more difficult, or should be even, in fact, than, than the pocket of code. And we could, if we had, if we could take those that are in conflict with charter that, that we feel comfortable with the charter well, then we could wipe out all those conflicts fairly easily.
I think that was the spirit of that also. This is another issue.
Is it this council's desire that we ask the clerk to continue in that effort or to work with as city attorney and continue to try to clean up the code section as it, as conflicts with charter? I mean, I would think that'd be a routine thing we need to do anyway.
Yeah, I think we need to do that. The only, my only concern is that this whole process was brought up by Mr. Huffman and he's not here. I, I get the feeling that maybe we should just go along with what we just said, but also keep this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, it will be on the agenda.
So that Mr. Huffman can present his arguments.
One other thing I would say about the elimination of the council committee appointment is, and Mr. Berrisford made me think of it by asking about the city clerk. She did go back. Apparently, this has been the case, the mayor making appointments to the city council committees at least since nineteen twenty-two and most likely before that. And subsequent to nineteen twenty-two, at least, it's pretty much the mayor has made those appointments. So we got about a hundred years of history here that we are looking to maybe change, good or bad. But anyway, thank you. Anything else on that item? Okay, if not, discussion of GMA retirement benefit cost. I'm sorry, are you doing that one?
Yeah, Mr. Huffman asked me to, since he wasn't here to, it's really not the cost study that we're going, he asked me to do, but give an update of where the committee which he chairs is at the current time. The reason a cost study fee was mentioned was that the pension committee has discussed with our human resources manager, the change of a couple of things in the pension. And for that, if GMA were to tell us the impact, they would want to do a study and a fee. And the three changes, major changes that have been discussed about doing is having a different multiplier for new hires in our pension plan with a contribution of some basis that may or may not be matched. The exact multiplier hadn't been given out or whether it be one and three quarters or two hadn't been decided for the study basis. The second change that Mr. Huffman had requested be looked at is the public safety employees of what would, how would that affect our pension plan if they were to be eligible for full retirement at fifty-seven or fifty-eight years of age based on the fact that they are in a position of saving lives and that their agility might not be the same at sixty-three or sixty-four as it might be at fifty-seven or fifty-eight. But that was a second consideration, a change that they were wanting to look at. And the third and final one was the freeze of elected officials' pension at the end of each of our respective terms, i.e. what would that do for the benefit of the city if we were either reelected or whoever took our position would not be able to approve any benefits? Those were the three things. Now, GMA, I believe they wanted $2,500 as a study and we have since come up with, before wanting to come to council and suggest that we do the study, we have come up with additional questions with, that we want them to answer. For example, the main question was is if our funding percentage is, is increasing, why is our funding deficit also increasing? If our, if our percent of funding is increasing, our deficit should be decreasing or at least not increasing. And I think that was the major question. So there was something that Lori Waters, our HR manager, has to get answers before we come back to council and say, or before Mr. Huffman will come back to council and recommend that maybe a study should be done. And that's just an update.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. Discussion of the Main Street work program and funding. Mr. Ward and Mr. Grant. They made a presentation some time ago, three, four months ago, probably now. I'm not sure how long it was, regarding the things, the plans that they have working toward for Main Street. But go right ahead.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it. Happy birthday, Mr. Dyer. Again, one pass around is, is the actual, the strategy and tactics charts that we
of each of our respective terms, i.e. what would that do for the benefit of the city if we were either re-elected, or whoever took our position would not be able to approve any benefits? Those were the three things. Now, GMA, I believe they wanted $2,500 as a study, and we have since come up with, before wanting to come to council and suggest that we do the study, we have come up with additional questions that we want them to answer. For example, the main question was, is if our funding percentage is increasing, why is our funding deficit also increasing? If our percent of funding is increasing, our deficit should be decreasing, or at least not increasing. And I think that was the major question. So there was something that Lori Waters, our HR manager, has to get answers before we come back to council and say, or before Mr. Huffman will come back to council and recommend that maybe a study should be done. And that's just an update.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Discussion of the Main Street work program and funding, Mr. Ward and Mr. Grant. They made a presentation some time ago, three, four months ago, probably now, I'm not sure how long it was, regarding the things, the plans that they have, working toward for the Main Street. But go right ahead.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it here. Happy birthday, Mr. Dyer. Again, one pass around is the actual, the strategy and tactics charts that we presented to you guys back in August, and we got really good feedback, positive feedback from everyone, and we really appreciate that. I think then we had some requests to come back and sort of create a budget, what it would take to execute this program. And so the attachment that gave you sort of projected budget needs requirements, basically takes each one of these tactics and puts a price on it, and there is cost involved, or estimated cost involved. So, again, we won't go through all of this, but I think, you know, just tonight, we're talking about holiday lights and movie projection equipment and theater, all those things are great for enhancing the character of downtown Canton, and getting more people down here will fully support that. One we're stressing in with this strategy and tactics for the Main Street program is all about economic development. It's about bringing businesses to downtown, increasing revenues for the city. And by frankly, we just, we need a budget for the execution of the program to get the results that we need to get. And if you take our existing budget for 2013 for the program, once you take the Main Street directors' fees and benefits out, that leaves us $19,800 to run a Main Street program. And when we bear that to what, you know, Woodstock is spending on their program, we'll be going, questions, why can't we do these things that Woodstock is doing? And they're investing, you know, half a million dollars in their program. So, again, we just went through this, and again, each tactic and supplied a budget to it. Of course, we welcome any money we can get, we'll take the money, you guys are going to save on buying your sandwiches down at R&amp;M for lunch, and then we'll put it to the program. We'll take any money we can get, and where we can get it from, and we'll prioritize it. Any money we get, we're going to spend on these tactics and these goals and these strategies that have been thoughtfully considered, and that is our strategy. And we have things in here, I think this kind of started with the rental assistance program that we had talked about, you know, months ago, possibly, you know, identifying a revenue source for that with a rental car excise tax. So we really have done our due diligence to try to find ways to fund what we've done. And you'll see a lot of these things on the chart, which are in blue, which already, process already done, already completed. So we have been really resourceful with the funds that we have had, and we're using those to invest back in the program, but really, again, to generate the economic development that we want in downtown, we just feel like we need a budget to do that.
Can they talk to some merchants?
Talk to some merchants. Just example, the rental assistance program, which we've kind of budgeted like $50,000 for a year, these are, again, sort of annual revenue costs that we're projecting. And there's a new women's clothing store called Threads that just opened up in downtown Woodstock about a couple of months ago. I actually spoke to the owner, Jody Tiberio, and asked her if we had a real assistance program in place, and if we were in a position to promote that, which she had considered, you know, possibly opening a shop in downtown Canton. And she said, oh, I mean, she would have, she thought it was a great idea, and acknowledged the work that is going on in downtown Canton, and the events that we're currently doing to bring down here. So, but again, a real assistance program is not a silver bullet. It's one program, an overall strategy designed to, it's not one of these things, it's all these things, and prioritizing those things. So we won't go through this line by line. We included the billboard on 575 in here, and I think that may be currently funded under 2013. So again, we want to kind of get as complete a picture as possible. We're doing other things, such as the Main Street mornings, the breakfast series that we started a few months ago, they've been very, very popular, and the merchants were funding that themselves, as far as coffee and refreshments and housing those, and bringing in speakers. And again, we accomplished a lot of things already with the T-shirts and the farmer's market. We have some things in here like growing, you know, continue to grow the farmer's market and First Fridays, which have been really successful. About you all out tomorrow night for our November 1st Friday. But we do, last First Friday, last month, we did have a Motown theme, and so we brought in a DJ to play Motown music. And we want to kind of theme these events to kind of have different themes and different music, we possibly get some bands in here, but all this thing, of course, requires expenditures. And so we've just been kind of funding those things with the $5 donation that we get from the classic cars that show up. But we'd like to do some, maybe, you know, a motorcycle and barbecue, jazz, and I, you know, other things, and have some other things in here. And we need to kind of grow and expand our existing website, and we need to do some things to that, as far as getting some resources on there, some programming things that-
Available properties.
Available properties, and all, again, things to really promote downtown Canton, the opportunities there. But those things take money to, you know, program and code, and sort of existing websites all been donated to this point, but we're at the point now where we have to really grow and change that and make it more effective. So, again, just wanted to give this to you guys for your consideration. We, again, will appreciate any help we can get, wherever it comes from, that's really up to you guys. And we've made some suggestions, and, you know, I think it comes from a variety of sources, but this is what, you know, we're predicting we would need to execute this program in a very strategic and effective manner. If so, we're going to get some great return on that investment. So, ask for your consideration, and appreciate it, so.
Any questions? Just one. Let me say, as everyone knows, Ginger came to the board back quite long, must be six months ago, or longer, maybe, with one of those items on the plan, work plan there, and that was the rental car tax and the rental assistance. And the rental car tax was the funding mechanism that she brought with her to fund that program, which most organizations, as you know, and I think I remember what Mr. Rush said, that is really interesting, you actually come with a program and a means of paying for it. And so, you know, I think that is still out there, that is a possibility, and I think a good possibility to get some funding for these type programs. I mean, it's not anything like it's new, because Woodstock's been doing it for years, and apparently, and most of the municipalities have that. And I think that it's, you know, unfortunately, sometimes for the rental car people, you know, cities have to kind of grab when they can, as much as possible, unfortunately, and you don't like to do it, but sometimes I think it's a revenue source that has been made available to us through the legislature, and I think we sort of have to take advantage of it, instead of just raising property tax every time, you know. The need's going to be there to do that too, as we know, and other fees and so forth. But I think we ought to give that consideration, and even if, even if all that were not to be used for rental assistance, and I could see where it probably would not be, if, you know, if it's offered out there and, you know, nobody protects of it, then, you know, start on your next priority on this plan, and use some of that money in your next priority. I would hope you'd be able to take that money and really prioritize it if it were allowed to be utilized, and put it to good use. But I really do believe that it could make a difference in downtown. So it's going to be my suggestion that we bring forth that rental car tax again at the next meeting, and vote it either up or down, one way or the other. And I'll shut up about it if it's voted down, at least for a little while, but not very long. Mr. Rush?
Just want to clarify one thing, and you're right, I did say that it was a good idea to have funding, but at the time, I assumed that we had more than one rental car company that would be paying the fee, but as it turns out, we only have one. But the question I really wanted to ask was, did we not, in this recent fiscal year, have an increase in the hotel motel tax? Were we getting more money from that than we worked prior?
That's true, it's relatively the same.
It's the same, okay. Because that, some of that money could be used for the Main Street program, could it not?
As they pointed out, for example, the billboard, somebody-
Yeah, okay.
Somebody did, so they, yeah. And of course, you know, all this part of the DDA, Canton Tourism, Main Street, they're all doing a whole lot with very little. Eventually, you know, before too much longer, we're going to have that, the theaters are going to be paid off. And that's a, what, a hundred and something thousand dollars roughly a year, I guess over $100,000 a year that will happen now. That's another, what, is it three years?
Four.
Four, another four years, I'm sorry. Maybe I want to see that. But, anyway, anybody else have any comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Have you checked with Riverstone lately to see how their rental assistance program's working out?
We did talk to some merchants over there, because I think they're still offering six-month free rent with a certain lease, and I think some merchants we talked about kind of didn't do that because I think the terms-
They weren't eligible.
They weren't eligible, or for some reason, so. But again, I mean, it's, we want to talk to them, say, you know, would you, there's a pizza restaurant there, but they went there because it was already set as a pizza restaurant, so.
I'm just curious, last time I checked with them, not one single rental assistant had been taken advantage of. Does the city of Woodstock offer a rental assistance program for downtown?
I don't think they currently, but I know that they, there are other incentives for new businesses, and literally I've talked to, kind of talked about all the things that they did, did invest in to kind of get merchants there. So I know they are actively working, whether, you know, working with building codes or building permits, I mean, they are doing things to attract people, you know, financially from downtown, so.
So other assistance programs, but not free rent?
Not free rent, but we did, when we did the study, there, you know, dozens of cities in Georgia that, and we've got that list somewhere if you want to see it, that are doing a rental assistance program. Some are more successful than others. What we heard is that if they didn't have enough money to do it, it wasn't really worthwhile, it wasn't really attractive. And we put in $50,000, and that could probably be, you know, three or four businesses if we subsidized them for, you know, a year or so, for the first year, so.
And again, if we don't get papers for that, for some reason, we can use that money still to other places.
Again, everything on this, anything on this chart, you know, that's how we would spend money, any money that you guys can find in your pockets to give us, and from many sources, again, we welcome that. I'm, again, I want to stress that, you know, this is all about economic development and downtown, and-
We are competing with people who are giving free rent.
Well, you know, to me, you are competing with people who are giving free rent outside of downtown. Downtown, as you know, is somewhat unique, and it's unlike, in fact, you know, the high rich partners, the guys that did the 151 building. They took a big gamble coming downtown and building that 21,000 square foot office building. I think it took, it took something special to do that. It's going to take something more special to get somebody to bring a dress shop to downtown than to bring a dress shop to Riverstone or Canton Marketplace. It's going to take an extra effort to do that.
Right.
And it's going to take more to do it. So I think that's what we're faced with downtown, and the reason that we need to do what we can to incentivize people to come downtown.
I mean, I think too, we've got a few new businesses downtown, like a dress shop or something, that, that kind of takes a lot of its own, you've seen that happen in Woodstock. And so I, I really think that if we got three or four businesses downtown, or even, you know, two with this program, you know, it's the kind of thing we probably only need to do, you know, for a year or so.
On the brush rate.
So I mean, I think we're investing in other areas, you know, sort of the new streets games, people are kind of acknowledging that, and acknowledging our events, and the First Fridays, you can't get into a restaurant downtown, the merchants love it, the new owners have just bought the fork and hat, and have really, you know, aggressive plans to invest in that business, that they want to do more sidewalk dining. So we did put in here some money for sidewalk dining to encourage that, that maybe we could, you know, provide common, like, you know, the ropes and stands to kind of define those areas, so that everybody's not doing something different, or doesn't, I know Rome does that, so that we have more people, you know, eating on the sidewalks and people seeing things, you know, going on downtown, so. And again, we're very conservative with these numbers, we didn't put anything in here that we, you know, thought was extravagant, and we've got to hard-press execute this, but there is a threshold of, you know, return on investment. And we do see this as a real investment, so.
I just want to say, I think, obviously, y'all are doing an excellent job downtown. We're, you know, on the weekends, the most evenings, it's just amazing, it's so much better than it was, it's just, it's just excellent. I obviously am going to have a problem with sticking it to the rental car people, especially now that they've made the commitment to buy property, and I thought we had already decided this, there's other ways to come up with that $50,000. There's, you know, you and I talked about other ways after this, which we'll bring up if we need to, but the, again, sticking it to one business that's not even downtown is just wrong, it's not done in a lot of other places. We went through all this six months ago, we have to drag back up the statistics and facts and figures, we will, but I do think it's a great idea for us to vote on it next meeting, once and for all, let's, I thought we had ended the thing. It was an ugly chapter in our history that I thought we'd put behind us, let's, if we have to, let's put it behind us and then move on, continue to develop downtown and the entire city. I think Woodstock has an excellent model, it's not just downtown, they have a director of economic development for the whole city, we do not, we only focus on downtown. Woodstock, there's the director, Billy Pepper, will tell you, he doesn't really care if the development is downtown or in the city, it's all good for downtown, whether it's around or in the city. And maybe that's what we need to look at, is possibly structuring ours a little differently, where we have a director of economic development for the city, and then with a person maybe to focus on downtown below them. But, you know, if we're going to invest in economic development, we need to focus on the entire town.
Well, I think, I honestly think we do focus on downtown as too, as well, because we do have Canton Tourism, and, you know, I think that it's much easier, as you know, to get, and it's not easy to get businesses anywhere, obviously, but it's much easier to get a business into the strip shopping center along the side of the interstate than it is in a building downtown. It's just much easier to do that, and it does take a special effort there, and I think you do have to focus some of that, but you can never, you never disregard the other businesses within the city. They're all important to the city, and so while some of them take even more effort to deal with, or to get people located downtown, but you can't ignore the others as well.
Absolutely. Parking is the reason. It's easy to do it outside of town, and some of these towns have built beautiful parking decks. We have a piece of property that's owned by, I'm not sure if it's the city or the Board of Education, right, right across here, they're interested in the parking deck, you know, maybe we should look at a bigger picture, keep our biggest employer downtown, the Board of Education. We're going to keep fooling around until they go away, and then we're going to have three empty buildings down here. Luckily, you know, Dr. P. does want to stay downtown, he wants to be downtown, but we got to give him some help, or they will move, and then we'll have a real mess. Parking, if we could get us a parking deck, built maybe jointly with the Board of Education on this big corner lot here, that would be huge. That's thinking big, that's what we need to do, is think big.
And just one more point about Riverstone, and I agree totally that city and we, you know, support each other, and anything that's happening in Riverstone or Canton Place is good for downtown, because it just brings more people. But do keep in mind that, like, Riverstone, Canton Place, I mean, they have huge marketing budgets, and so they're, they're marketing those businesses in those things, and sort of, if you think about downtown as another sort of business district, as another Riverstone just in a different form, like, we really have no support to kind of attract people to downtown, businesses to downtown, and that's really everything in the strategy is to do that, and some kind of thinking that way, so. But again, we don't care where the money comes from, and we don't want, you know, we don't want the entire program to be tied to one- don't want the entire program to be tied to, to one particular issue, I think that's how it started, and I think that was unfortunate, but, but, you know, wherever it comes from, variety, again, it's not one thing that's gonna do it, it's, you know, it's a real strategic plan and working that plan, you know, as, as best we can, so, but we appreciate your time, consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Let's see where we are. Okay, discussion of proposing on bond referendum, Mr. Rush?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, well, my original idea was to have a poll on two items that we would give to the residents of Canton that we would vote on at the time we're gonna do our bond referendum, but I have since been advised by both the mayor and Mr. Dyer that the city can't sponsor a poll, it has to be by one of the parties, so, so I think that part of it's gonna go out the window, but what I'm gonna do is introduce the two topics here for council to discuss, and one of them, in a sense, has already been brought up by Mr. Cummins when he was talking about the freezing of the pension benefits for council people and, and the mayor, and my second, my add-on to that would be that, and I'm not sure if we can do this this year, we have to wait till next year, but at the same time, we vote on changing the ordinance to eliminate the pension benefits and we also increase the salaries of council from two thousand, twenty-one hundred to eight thousand dollars a year, and for the mayor from thirty-six hundred, I believe, or something...
Three, three thousand.
Three thousand. I almost gave you the right. To ten thousand, but at the same time, we phrase the benefit, the pension benefit, so that if, if, if the three council people who are electable next year get re-elected, then their salary goes up and their pension ceases, but the other three council people and the mayor who still have terms to run, their pension will stay the same and their salary will be at the lower level until their term freezes. Can we do that, Mr. Dyer?
We have, I'll have to figure out, the only part I have doubt about is, council members should all be paid the same, and I think you could achieve that.
Okay, so that, that's, that's the objective, so that, that was the first one, that, and so I think that we should, you know, make a consideration there.
Okay.
I was in that meeting with Mr. Cummings, Mr. Up, and we approached the first group, we approached the first group about that, they said it wouldn't make no difference in the amount of money that it's gonna, that it's gonna cost if they, if they included the salary, they said that it's such a small amount, it would make no difference.
If you include salary increase, we've been told that if, 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 for instance, the elimination of the mayor and council's pension were to instantly stop, the city, as I understand it, would save sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars per year. And, and, and is that, is that not what?
I think that's what I heard them say, yes. And my, my comment to that, I mean, I, I think that's great, I wasn't even thinking about the cost to the city of a pension plan, I was thinking about the silliness of the pension plan for the city, because after four years, every one of us will get a, be vested in a pension, we will get more money from the pension each year than we made while we were working as council people, and if we're staying here eight years, we get twice that amount, and I think that's unfair to the citizens, particularly it's a long-term deal, if you have someone in here who's thirty-five years old and he gets vested for a pension, I don't know when he starts to collect it, but it's still a long term, in my case, it wouldn't be that long, but, but anyway, I, that, that was the reason, and the people I've talked to, the, the residents of the city, they all feel that pensions for city officials who are part-time people shouldn't be, and I know other municipalities have them, and I don't know why, I just think it's a, it places a burden on the city for future generations that shouldn't be there. That was, that was my reasoning anyway, but I don't know where we're gonna go with this, but that's, and, and the second point I wanted to bring up is a little dicier, I'm gonna suggest term limits for municipal officials in the city of Canton, I'm gonna suggest, and we have to do this, council has to approve it a hundred percent, and it goes to the legislature, and they make the change, but I'm suggesting two terms for council and two terms for mayor. I think, and I, and again, I've talked to residents, they're all four-term limits, they'd like them to go all the way up through Congress, we have it for the president.
My guy.
But, but those are the two things that I was, I was going to suggest, that we poll the people and ask them what their feelings were, but since we can't do that, I'm just gonna put it out on the table and see where council is and what we wanna do about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When that came up, a couple of years ago, the timing on that, and that's what council's gonna have to do for us to look at, because in an election year, you can't have the salary increase, compensation increase.
You can't do it between the qualifying time and the election, you can do it before the qualifying time.
Before, so that there was, there was that timeframe in there that you could not pull it, so, if that's something we wanna look at, let's get moving on it, and it makes sense, we've talked about it numerous times there.
So, term limits would require a legislative act?
I, I need to confirm that, but I'm, yeah, that's an election issue that you don't have home of power for.
Yes, go ahead.
I looked into term limits with the, because the city of Woodstock unanimously voted their, their council a few years ago, I checked their minutes, they, they voted for term limits all themselves, and then that had to be brought to the, our legislative delegation, where it was absolutely killed, imagine that, but the, that doesn't mean we shouldn't pursue it, I think it needs to be, be publicized, but I believe term limits are a wonderful thing, I think eight years is, is enough time, and if you wanna take four years off and try it again, I see no problem with that, but, you know, it'll, that's what's gonna happen, it's, it's gonna die when it goes to Atlanta.
Go ahead, Mr. Rush. One other thing that did come out during the pension discussions was that if an elected official was already collecting a pension and ran for office again, that they would, their pension, and got elected, of course, and served, their pension would be suspended while they were receiving salary compensation, that was a question we proposed, asked of GMA.
Well, I would certainly agree, we need to eliminate pensions, that's ridiculous, but, you know, look at the, the makeup of this body, you know, I'm the youngest one and I'm no spring chicken, these younger folks can't afford the time that it takes. We need to be paid a reasonable amount of money for the time we spend doing this, and, and, but it needs to stop when our term stops and, and not continue with these, these pensions, although I'm not giving mine up, but, you know, I quit at the end of this term, but, but, you know, because I didn't get paid enough to, to do the job, but I'd agree, we need to pay, get paid enough to do this job, and, and I've looked at a lot of other cities around our size, you know, we're, we're just pathetic, we need to be making probably three, three times what we're making to be competitive with cities in the twenty to thirty thousand population range.
Yeah, I, I spoke to someone at, at one of the GMA functions, and they were from a, a small town, I think it was less than a thousand people, and they were getting as much as we are for being a consultant, you know...
There's some that's making four times.
Yeah, well, the board of commissioners, they make about, just a rate, just, maybe make, the board commissioner make about thirty thousand.
Thirty.
See, they're, they got ten times the population we got, too.
But they don't do ten ti, I bet they don't spend ten times as a number of hours.
I assure you that they probably don't, well, some of them might, some of them probably not.
Chairman makes fifty thousand.
Does he make that now? I know, I know they tried to get that through, but my understanding was they didn't accept that or something, but I could be wrong.
Yep, I could be wrong.
Yeah, go ahead.
You try grandfather back end on your old county committee chairman, when you were county chairman.
What about?
You try to grandfather that back into what it currently is now, get that back back, but that's aside.
Back, back. I would like to do that.
That's what I'm saying, I think what, what was Rob was mentioning, I think the climate is ideal right now, maybe for the state to think in terms of what we want to come forward with, maybe two years ago or five years ago, it wasn't in their minds, and right now with the total population, as stirred up as it is, term limits, I think that's talked up and down the entire line, so I think we should really make a run at it, get it.
Well, the legislature, you know, certainly, it's my understanding that there, and this is probably what you were alluding to, I'm not sure, but the legislature would, I mean, legislative delegation requires a unanimous vote, I understand, of all, of the mayor and council, I don't know if the mayors will put in that vote or not, but, you know, it has to be a hundred percent. A hundred percent, you know, for them to introduce any kind of local legislation, which up to this point has been very difficult for us to get.
Question, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Mr. Rush.
Yeah.
Is this a proposal that we wanna bring forward on this issue, because again, it's a timing issue, you know, to work this thing through, so, is it something we, I think we're all sitting here nodding our heads, it's a good idea and something we should really move ahead on, so, do we put it on the agenda, or what do we?
I would, I'd like to put it on the agenda for next session and that we, we vote on it, the only caveat there is that Mr. Dyer has to tell us that we can, we can do the, the salary increase in the pension business, how we can do it, if we can do that next year, we have to now or wait till next year, but didn't, didn't Atlanta just raise their salary?
They proposed...
One of the commissioners?
Yeah, we did, I just need to check and see, 'cause if, if you want it to take effect in two thousand thirteen, obviously we need to do it now, but I, I'm not sure you can, and, but you can do it anytime before qualifying, it's take effect in two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, two thousand, I think two thousand fourteen is when it would have to take effect, I don't think we can, we can make it take effect in two thousand thirteen, either one of them.
Are we talking about term limits or salary?
I was right through salary.
That was, that was salary.
I was right through, you know... How about I just figure out what you have to do, when to do it, on all three of those issues?
Okay. Anything else? Do you have anything else, Mr. Rush, on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're willing to touch on that next subject, go ahead, I'm sorry. Cool. I didn't see you.
Okay, discussion of fire protection fee system feasibility study, Mr. Rush?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the, the whole purpose of this was, we, we've already agreed that we're gonna go for a bond referendum, and the bond referendum, if it passes, will fund the construction of fire stations, it does not address the issue of staffing, so the point of this is a feasibility study to, to look at the current needs and, and the cost of service and how we're gonna fund it, and what they're gonna look at, they're gonna look at it in, in a multiplicity of ways, and, and on page two of the, the package I got, it said they can look at the general fund providing the total future cost of service, the general fund in connection with a fire fee, or a fire fee doing the entire thing in a, in a rollback in the village, or a combination of the fire fee and, and the general fund. So, what, all this is, is a feasibility study for us to figure out ways that we can do the funding when we get, when and if we get the fire stations built, and also, this will also take into consideration, should the bond referendum not pass, how we could do it with the same kinds of funding, so I, I think all it does, it gives us a way to look at funding, and we tried so many different ways to figure out how to do this and how to do that, if we, and this, this group has already done this for another community in state Georgia, so they have experience and they know what to do, and they're gonna look at, it's a very complicated method that they're looking at funding a fire fee, but they know it would be, they're certain it would be acceptable to the, to the legislature and to the courts, so I would like to put this on the agenda next time that we can, after everybody reviews this, we can vote on this up or down.
Okay.
Mr. Rush? I just have one question, of, of the city manager, Mr. Wood, Ross and Associates, what happened to them? I, we're now switching to a, a different group, is there some basis for that?
If I could answer, yeah, they did, the basis is that Ross is a group that we've used for other studies, they have never done anything like this, this group has, has done the study, Ross would have to reinvent the wheel to do the study, and, and these people have already done it for Garden City, Georgia, so they have experience and I think would be a little, I, I don't wanna dispute the Ross's professionalism, but I think it's, given that they have experience, they know where to go.
Mr. Rush? The only comment that, that I do have is, are we all, are, is everybody aware here that Garden City is a little different than we are? As of last year, they did not assess a property tax or an ad valorem tax, so they had an entirely different situation than we do, where we have an ad valorem tax that is used to fund our fire services, and I don't know if that's gonna present some complexity or some problems in developing this fee-based system. I know they did it, I believe, if I'm standing to be correct, I don't know the exact number, but Garden City went from a volunteer to having paid employees, and I believe that when they went to the pay, they had a federal grant that decreased over years and they had to fund it, so they developed this fee system in order to, in order to fund their entire fire department, they did not use it in conjunction with a, the same type of costs coming out of an ad valorem tax, and I, and I think that's where the complexity gets, that if you try to fund the fire operational costs out of two different, out of a fee or an assessment-based system and a tax, they might run into some complexity legally there, I don't know, Mr. Dyer could answer that problem.
They have, she did give to me an analysis of the legal opinion regarding the fire services in general, ad valorem taxes, but, so, and she said it has been, it has been looked at by legal authorities and they feel comfortable with what they've done, that was another reason that we seem more, I seem more confident with using them.
Anyone else?
In the previous month's discussions about funding revenue for the fire district, fire department, we ran into taxes, we ran into fees, and we ran into assessments, and this organization has gone through all of that type of activity, and what they come back with is a way to fund what we want and what we need, so I would like to have that as, on the agenda for a vote, and the amount of time that the committee that was referred to earlier this evening, that was unauthorized or whatever, was made note of, spent a lot of time on trying to come up with different ways, and we end up thrown in the towel and going for the bond referendum. Why go through a little exercise when we have a company that has done this, has worked this, and come forward with a good answer for us and keep everything legal, keep everybody happy, and I think that's what we should do, move ahead with this.
Mr. Mayor, one other comment, the lady did say she would be very willing to come to the next council meeting and, and answer any questions that anybody in council might have, so if, if it's council's wish, I could request her to come, she's from, the company's from Savannah, but she said she would be here.
It'd be a good idea, I have no problem with that, I think, I think it'd be a good idea. Anyone else? Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move away from this topic... Before we move away from this topic, I was talking to Mr. Dyer here the other day about the referendum. What we needed to do as a council, and there's bits and pieces of things that we need to pull together. So that we do have a structure, so that when we bring this forward in December and get it on the docket, we got to send it down to the United States for approval, federal government, 60 days. We want to make sure everything that we have is lined up properly. So to me, it's obvious that we need a committee.
We need to appoint would be?
Appoint would be. As we discussed earlier, and you read a very nice two-page litany there in reference to that. Would you appoint a committee?
I would consider that, however, I feel like this, what you're asking there basically is a function of our city manager. We have a professional manager who can gather in all that information and bring to our council for their consideration with, along with his recommendation. Now that would be my suggestion. Discussion of the annual update, amended capital improvements element.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm back again this year. This is something that state law requires the city can't do on an annual basis because of Ken's impact fee. This would be the annual update for capital improvements element for part of our comprehensive plan, five-year short-term work plan, which is also part of our comprehensive plans. There has been one change that has shown in the police capital improvement element in which the police department has requested to use impact fee monies for tactical weapons. I have done research, I've talked with Ross and Associates in regards to tactical weapons being an acceptable use of impact fee funds in accordance with state of Georgia requirements. Everything indicates that is an acceptable use of impact fee funds. We have advertised and proposed, and the public hearing at the next city council meeting, the beginning of the meeting on the 15th, which is also part of the requirement for the annual review and update prior to submitting a resolution. This does have to go through a review at A R C and D C A, requires 60 days for their review comments. Then after we've received their comments that we're in compliance with the requirements of state law, we have to come back and do a resolution to adopt these amendments. All of this has to be done by our due date of February 28th. That's the reason for bringing this forward at this point in time, so that the state reviews and everything can be done and I can bring another resolution back. I'm available to answer any questions any of the council members have in regards to this annual update.
How do you define tactical weapons? What is that?
I would have to talk with the police chief, but I believe the riot shotguns and things of that nature. Any type of weapons is acceptable, even sidearms for the police department.
Any other, any comments, questions? That'll stay there then, huh?
Yes, I think I've got, made it four in a row.
That's the discussion of the bids for the renovation that you've accounted chambers?
Yes, sir. And I do want to pass out, did notice some of the information that was supplied in the package. There was a typo in the bid list with one of the bid firms. We did have six firms that attended a pre-bid meeting. We had our bid opening, had four firms that submitted bids. Our office has been going through and looking at all of the bids. You will notice that there's quite a difference between low bid and high bid. We have requested additional information from all four of the bid firms. We have received some of the information from some of the firms, but not all of the firms. There were some items that were contained within our published request for proposals that none of the firms addressed. Some of the things that we asked for, some of them addressed, some of them didn't. But there are some things that none of the firms addressed. And during our research, we also discovered that there are some minor technical issues with the published request for proposals that are not in full compliance with the bidding laws of the state of Georgia. Because there's, sir?
I said, that's not good?
I wasn't real happy about it. And what I'm referencing is, it is titled a request for proposals, when it really should have been titled a request for bids. A request for proposals requires that the, the review and the ranking criteria be included within that. Also, because this is a public works project in excess of $100,000, the bidding laws are specific, that requires a bid bond. Our published request did not have that specific requirement in there. There was one firm that did submit a bid bond. Anyway, there are enough issues and questions. It is our opinion that the city council would consider, if you will, declaring the law, let's prepare another request for proposals and go through again, I'll strike a circle.
So what you're asking there, I guess, is that maybe this council reject this, any and all bids, actually all bids, and begin with a new set of specifications and requests and so forth, and move forward. So maybe by bringing in a consultant, an architect, or some, or someone who could put this together and follow this project all the way through to completion, maybe?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead. I'd like to follow up on that proposal with rescind, if that's what you got to call it, the bids or? Reject.
Reject.
Reject those bids. I've talked with the architectural firm and number one, they said, option one's got to be out. It's encapsulation, just remove it, highly recommended. But I would like to be able to bring to council a proposal at the next meeting, so that we could have that set up and so approved, so we can get ahead and move on the project as we need to.
I tend to agree. Is this, is there other questions here for Ken at this point? Or would we be able to do a head nod to reject those bids and then follow up the next meeting with the official action? Anyone supposed to do that?
One of the other points is, the service of an architect does not have to go out for bid. It's a service. Therefore, we don't have to worry about getting bids. It's just a matter of here's what was offered up. So I think that.
That is true. Mr. Captain?
I think in discussions with Mr. Patton, we said we'd use the architect also to manage the actual job that would be.
That would be as part of.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, if I might, in regards to having, if you will, a third party that would provide assistance, force project management, writing the bid specification documents, handling the bid process, everything on behalf of the city. Because this bid was for the ceiling repairs, the mayor and council have had discussions about other work options within that same meeting space. It very likely would be an economy of scale if the council would look at this whole bid process, looking at all the improvements that council's looking at with one bid document. I believe all of that is going to be taken care of through us loss funds, if I'm not mistaken.
That would be in one document, right?
Yes, sir. Cover everything that has been discussed, instead of doing multiple bids and sort of piecemeal work.
Right.
Under that proposal, that is absolutely right on. That would be, including for the dice, bill work, anything else would be in there. Sound system, the whole package, turnkey, have to be all specified.
We have one person we look to, or one company we look to if we're, who's all?
Similar to what we did with the Russian.
Right.
And that way we are going to find change orders or something pop up on us, that type of thing.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to probably make a suggestion, it's a process question, some suggestion. We, council has not typically approved the specifications, bid specifications, before they go out. We deal with on the contract after the bids come back. I would prefer the process to be that the council approved the bid specification before they go out, to eliminate any questions about what work has been authorized. It sort of came up in a couple of our conversations, highlighted in this particular project. As everybody was saying, I don't think we ought to paint this, but I think we ought, it's sort of brought it into focus, that you should be saying, here's why I want you to bid. So that we've agreed on the scope of work. I'm sure you don't object to that, I'm just going to suggest it and try to work that into our planning as far as timeline goes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Rush? You think that might be a committee?
No, I don't want to be on that. That, that will be part of what we're going to have the service. And that specs will be in there specifying all the details right there.
Basically, you'd approve the bid package, that's what I would like to have.
Okay, the next item, are you through to that one?
Yeah, unless.
Got to, got to, no, I don't want to.
Any other questions?
I don't think of any more. Discussion of the final acceptance of the streets, Hampton Close and Reynolds Park at River Green?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The engineering division, city engineer, engineering inspector have performed inspections for the streets within these phases, Hampton Close at River Green, Reynolds Park at River Green. Everything is in order. You do have the resolution for you. We would request mayor and council consider approval of resolutions so that we can officially accept those streets within these sections as city maintenance streets.
Were there homeowner association dues that were specifically collected for streets in there?
This is not a private street situation, Mr. Mayor. These are streets that have always been proposed to be city maintenance streets.
These weren't.
Construction has been completed such that bonds are ready to be released and formal action to accept the streets.
I got you, okay. Mr. Captain?
You have one question, is there a specific reason why Madison Park wasn't included in this? Because Madison Park is, well, my understanding, in the same situation as these other two communities.
I would have to ask the city engineer and of course, Mr. West. Madison Park, are you familiar with that, Mr. West?
I have not, I have not had any, any request for any, any bond releases or any inspections on that particular portion of Madison.
Yeah, because they're, basically it's the same, same situation.
We can look into that and see if they're the same developer, if they're the same builder.
It's the same developer now.
I'm sure why he would not have came, maybe he doesn't have all of them. May I be ready? Final topic or any of that, may I be ready?
Thank you. Okay, Ken, update on revision of the cities' development code?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I was requested to provide the, you and the council members with an update on the status of where we are with our unified development code. A handout is coming around. This project is broken up into three sections, zoning portions, zoning regulations, development regulations, historical preservation regulations. The zoning portion, for the most part, is completed. As I and the zoning administrator keep reading back through the document, we found a few typos and a couple of things here and there that we missed in our previous hundred or so reviews. We do have a set of red line comments that we have not provided to the consulting firm yet. We're waiting to meet with a consultant once we have comments on the next portion of the development regulations ready. Also, in regards to the zoning, our office has been working mainly with the planning commission, but also with the citizens committee. The planning commission has requested some changes on the zoning map and portions of the city. And we're trying to finalize that. And that will be done prior to completing the development regulations portion. Development regulations, environmental regulations are in draft form, have been completed and reviewed. The development standards for road, water, sewer are in review and comment. The city engineer is completing his review of those development standards so that we can move that along. The last portion of development regulations that we're waiting the consultants to provide to us. And part of the reason we haven't received that yet is we need to finish these development standards before we can put in place everything in regards to inspections, plans, plans, permits, review procedures. The last thing is that we would also have to add some development regulation type definitions into our definitions chapter. Since there has been an additional engineer come on board with the city with the beginning of the new budget year, our city engineer is seeing some freed up time to put more time into this review to try to make this project belong. The third portion is historical preservation regulations. All of the ordinance to create the historical preservation commission and everything, as well as the assignment guidelines, are in the final draft form and are ready to go to a public hearing. We've been holding off on that until we get the unified code with the zoning development together so that we can start having work session meetings with the mayor and council to answer any questions, explain changes, and that sort of thing with the documents.
What time would you project? I, I feel like we, we need a, a work session for the, at least one work session for this council here to take a look at the direction of each of these various categories here. And, you know, so that they can ask questions and make sure that the direction this thing is going in is, is, is consistent with what the council would like to see. I know, I mean, it's, I know you did, they've done an awful lot of work. Citizens group's done a lot of work. But I think before we get to, to the very end of this thing, I think the council needs to take a look at it and, and maybe have, maybe you could have something like a PowerPoint presentation there at a work session one evening to where we could really kind of see the trends and see how it, how it is. I'd like to see what it is now and what, what are the changes particularly? You know, what are the changes? And, and I'm sure there'd be a lot of questions by the council that will go with that. But how soon do you think that it will be ready? Another month, two months?
Are you talking about a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, something like that. I mean, I certainly don't think it ought to be. I mean, I certainly don't think it ought to be the final, uh, draft or the final, uh, ordinance at this point because, you know, it's a little bit late at that point to start getting involved in it when you're, when it's almost over with.
I can start working on putting together, uh, something, uh, for the mayor and council with everything else that I'm involved with, working, uh, on, on behalf of the city. I'm not sure, uh, thirty days, uh, would be sufficient time, possibly sixty or ninety and, uh, like I said...
Say we could do it in January or something, maybe?
Yeah, it would be easier to, to do one for, say, zoning, one for development regulation. You know, the historic preservation, uh, stuff is, uh, completely new for the city camp.
Right.
Uh, there's never been a historic preservation commission, uh, a historic district that has been, uh, if you will, adopted, uh, by the mayor and city council, uh, with the city camp. There is a historic district that's on the national register, uh, and there is also a historic district that's different than the national register, uh, district that is, uh, on file with the state of Georgia that was done through the Cherokee County Historical Society. But, uh, the city council has never adopted any of that. And I can, uh, be working on either individual or going to cover all three, whatever the pleasure of the mayor and council.
Well, I mean, I, I just think, you know, make it as easy on you as you can, maybe January, February or whatever, but we need to, we need to move along with it as much as we can, and I, and I do think it's important that the, uh, council see exactly the direction of going in on this. And 'cause some of this, uh, particularly historic, uh, preservation regulations can have an impact on, on the development here. And, and, you know, there's gonna be some people that are all for it and there'll be some people who are not all for it. And so, uh, I need to really see how that, how that moves forward. Uh, but just, just, uh, let's just look maybe in January or February or something, early February, of, of putting something together by then if we can.
I'll try to begin on, uh, the zoning, 'cause like I said, for the, for the most part, the zoning portion is done, the historic preservation is done, is the development regulation side that, uh, we're, uh, uh, still a, a work in progress, if you will.
Okay.
Be much easier to get something, uh, fairly simple, if you will, not in that great detail as, uh, the document itself about the zoning, historic preservation.
Right. Okay. See, you have, you have anything else? Anybody else have a question or anything? Ken, go ahead.
Zoning, my, item one, the, uh, draft zoning map. I'm, I know in the past, before any of us were here, the, the city had been known to just change the zoning on a piece of property without notifying the owner, asking them or anything, which dramatically can affect the value of the property. Are we, we actually changing any zoning in, in this?
Well, all of the zoning district designation names are gonna be changed, uh, as a part of this. Uh, there will be a, a completely new zoning map of the whole city. Every, uh, piece of property, uh, in the city will be reflected with the new zoning district designation. Uh, for instance, you have an R1 now that, uh, possibly, and I can't remember if the R1 is the half acre or a single family attached, that would, uh, go to an R20 type of a designation. Uh, we have tried to minimize any outright changes of zoning from what is currently in place with properties. There are some, uh, properties, uh, for instance, one of the, uh, zoning districts in our current ordinance is, uh, ERC, Etowah River Corridor. That has no permitted uses and everything is conditional. Uh, we're proposing to do away with that district in its entirety and go back to commercial, industrial, residential type zoning, uh, for properties that are currently shown. That was sort of like an overlay. Uh, there's a, uh, a couple of other districts that had no permitted uses that we're making some changes to and changing terminologies. Uh, we're, we're, we're kind of bad at one district that, uh, sort of matches the office professional, current office professional, uh, the way it's written, doesn't allow, if you will, for residential, uh, and office use, uh, like you would suspect in, uh, that type of a transition district. It has specific language about, uh, how much of the structure has to be residential to be able to have some office use and things of that nature. We've tried to clean up some things like that, uh, just giving you some of the few examples. But, uh, there will be a new zoning map, uh, based upon the requirements of state law, uh, the city, uh, because it is a citywide zoning map and it will affect every piece of property. There will be public notices that will be put out in regards to the public hearings once we get to that point, but we're not required by law to send out a notice to every individual property owner, uh, that, uh, there's a new zoning map that's gonna be adopted.
Mr. Mayor, my point being, I believe it would be a good idea for us to go above and beyond state law if, if we're gonna change somebody's zoning that could affect their value or use of their property. They need to be, be notified that we're, we're doing that.
And, and, you know, I don't know. I guess that could, uh, could, could there be some sort of tie-in with the water bills on that?
That's the thing.
Tie in there and, uh, people with their zoning...
We expect before we, uh, conduct that public hearing, Mr. Mayor, through the city's website, uh, through newspapers, uh, there's gonna be, uh, plenty of advance notice, uh, given, uh, all the property owners of the city camp an opportunity to kind of look at the zoning map, see if, uh, they, uh, potentially have any adverse effects on valuation, things of that nature, as Councilman Brian has, uh, talked about.
Well, you know, that's, that, that, zoning's always a delicate issue without any doubt, controversial many, many times, and, and that's one of the reasons I feel like the council needs to kind of get involved in this to see where this is going as soon as we practically can before it gets too far down the road and, uh, you know, and we've wasted a lot of work, 'cause there may be some parts of it that the council may not wanna change. The Etowah River Corridor, you know, uh, that is, that is a sort of a weird zoning, I guess, to some degree. Uh, I'd like to see something like a Etowah River Corridor Protection Plan, uh, not necessarily do anything to do with the zoning, but, you know, they, I know, uh, Chattahoochee River has a Chattahoochee River Protection Plan and, uh, you know, there are specific regulations as, and they're much tighter regulations the closer you get to the river, certainly, to protect the river from overdevelopment and, and damage from development. And I'd really like to see that, but that's beyond your scope right now for, for this issue particularly.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, I think, I think as soon as we can, we really do need to, you know, look at that issue.
As long as the property owners are notified. I mean, I know we can do whatever with the zoning, but they, at least need to be notified. That's my, my point is, is the proper notification, not just...
Not just legal notification?
That was going on with...
Legal is advertising, you know?
Yeah, the advertisement in the legal law can, you know, if, uh, you wanna send, uh, an individual notice out to every, uh, property owner in the city, uh, you're looking at, uh, ten thousand parcels at, uh, you know, forty-five cents, uh, minimum. Uh, generally, we send, uh, notice letters out, uh, through a certification of mailing or certified mail. Certified mail, probably at five bucks, uh, a letter.
No, I'm only talking about the, the properties that would be changed.
I think the problem with that is identifying is, is the hard part, identifying each particular property where you're just changing names. All you, all you really can do is tell everybody, "Hey, the map's changing, you might need to come look at it."
Yeah. Yeah, it's, well, I mean, I'll give you the example. There was a piece of property that was designated, whatever the R was, that, that guy was allowed to build forty units on, and they went to, several years later to get his permit to build his forty units, and he realized it had been changed, and he could only now build twenty-five units on it. Nobody had told him anything, but he kept paying property taxes and, um, there he was. Luckily, the, the city did work with him on it to, to revise it, but that could, could impact somebody, especially out of town owners, you know, that are aware of what's going on. That's my, is if it's gonna negatively impact your, your value or your use, you, you need to be careful about that.
At this point in time, uh, Councilman Brian, I'm not aware of, uh, any particular piece of property that would have an adverse valuation impact because of the zoning map. I'm not saying that there isn't, but, uh, we've, uh, made a, uh, great effort to ensure that, uh, we have not done that during this process.
And, and any adverse, adverse impact would be because of the definitions in the category, not about the property.
Correct.
And so, it's a change in what's allowed in the particular classification.
Are, are you saying that...
That's not even what you're talking about, but I don't know how you notify them.
Are you saying that the use restrictions are not chang, would not be changing on those parcels? I mean, there wouldn't be different uses and so forth?
That's what I was talking about, different uses. That within the definition of a classification, you may have different uses or...
I'm not aware of anywhere where, uh, actually decreased the permitted use. We're proposing to...
Increase?
...some permitted uses with some of the districts. That might be a problem.
Good. Okay, so good, but anyway, yeah. Okay. Anyone else have anything here? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, discussion of T-Mobile tire attachment, uh, tax release amendment. Tell me you wanna address that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce, uh, Richard Waddell, he is with, uh, representing T-Mobile. They said they are, uh, asking permission to, uh, upgrade their antenna system, uh, with an amendment to the current lease agreement that we have with them that we entered into in ninety-nine. Uh, going to construct a corral on top of the hotel tank to facilitate those new upgrades for their system. Uh, they, we, Chief Floyd had a couple of comments that he was concerned in the beginning of interference and interruptions, that sort of, uh, that's been confirmed, no problem there. Structurally, they sent, uh, a review of structural, uh, analysis report. Should be no problem structurally. The one problem, we noted that, uh, prior, prior construction had blocked an access hatch to the tank itself. Uh, they have agreed to make sure that they correct that access problem. Uh, it's my opinion that we, uh, just go ahead and, uh, entertain the motion to promote them to upgrade their system.
Let me, let me ask you a question now. This is an amendment to the lease agreement of nineteen ninety-nine. Is that lease agreement still in effect from ninety-nine?
Yes, uh, yes, sir. That, that lease, uh, runs five years, uh, and then it renews for additional four, five year terms, and it runs for a total of twenty-five years, to my understanding.
Uh, but it's renewed, isn't it?
Yes, sir. It automatically renews. Uh, my understanding is we're in the third renewal term right now.
It doesn't renew at the same rate, does it?
Uh, it increases, uh, per term.
So it's built in to which is built in.
It has to enter in the...
The terms are built in.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thank you. All righty. You have something for the city manager for? You wanna do that or is there something else that you need to add?
No, I, I do, just for a second. Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to join you this evening. Um, I know I've got a lot of information, but I would say that the chairs have been locked more than I would say.
I can imagine.
Anyway, uh, Mr. Woods unfortunately not available to be with us, so we look forward to having him back very soon, and, uh, he has attached a report for everyone's reading enjoyment. I will spare your ears and I'll try to summarize that and read that out loud, so if you have any questions or comments, please let me know as soon as possible and I'll try to answer those promptly. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you filling in there and taking care of the ship while you're out at this time. Um, let's see. The only, the only item that I have is the, uh, that is, uh, is my intention to nominate, uh, to reappoint three members of the development authority, which is Wanda Roach, Cleveland Chambers and Louis Klein, for, uh, the, the term, which will be another three and a half years. Actually, they're holdover from July, I guess, in July, August or something. But anyway, that, I would nominate those for your consideration at the, uh, next meeting. Anyone else have anything? Anyway, that's about, about the day. Want to do a adjourn?
Sure.
Want to say those in favor, I?